Good afternoon to each of you. Welcome to the school board meeting for the Putnam County School District. Today is Tuesday, April 18, 2023. At this time, we will ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mrs. Linda Wagner and our invocation by Reverend Ted Stackpole.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Edgeworth. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts full of gratitude for the opportunity to gather together with our school board who serve our community. We thank you for the calling you have placed on each one of them to contribute to the education of our students and the growth of our school district. We ask that you bless this meeting with your presence and your guidance. Help us to work together, listen to one another, make decisions that are in the best interest of our students and our community. We pray for wisdom and discernment as we consider the important matters before us. May your Holy Spirit lead us in all that we do today and always. We also ask for your protection and provision for our students, teachers, and staff. May your loving hand be upon them always, keeping them safe, healthy, and thriving in every area of their lives. I pray all of these things in the powerful and precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, whenever you get to that point, we do have a speaking.
Okay, all right, thank you. At this time, we will have a presentation, a Florida Masonry presentation by Al Herndon.
Good afternoon, Board.
Well, good afternoon.
Today, I'd like to present to you Mr. Al Herndon from the Florida Masonry and Apprenticeship Program. He's been instrumental in helping us to get our building construction program started, and today he has a special presentation for a family.
Thank you. Close by. Thank y'all for having me here, and thank y'all for having a good CTE department. I think Renee and I started working, I've known Renee a long time, but I started working about a year and a half ago, getting serious about getting, we have a unique situation in Florida, in the United States. Just in Jacksonville and the surrounding counties, we've got $1.4 billion worth of construction out of the ground. That means dirt's been turned, people are working, and we don't have people to staff it. So, and we have run, I was brought into the Masonry Education Foundation to help promote career and technical education in the school system, especially the trades, electrical, carpentry, plumbing, heat and air, HVAC. We've had school districts that have not had those programs in their schools for over 40 years. So, we have grandparents that don't know anything about the construction industry. We have parents that don't know anything about the construction industry, and we've got kids that don't know how the world of work works. And when we found out, the Palmer family asked that tools be sent to y'all's program because they saw it, he saw it in the newspaper just before he passed, and that was his wish. And I have somebody I also would like to introduce to you, and he would like to say a few words, and then we're going to bring out Deborah and do a presentation. I'm going to present her with a challenge coin from our industry, but I thought we would get a certificate to present. And certificates are nice, so what we are going to propose, if we could build a memorial wall at the school board office here or down at a school of y'all's choosing, that we could put a plaque on for Mr. Palmer, and then we could have it, it's not going to be, we're not going to build a great wall, although we did. But what we would like to do is leave enough room on it. If anybody else wants to do anything special, you'll have a place to put a plaque for it. So, I'd like you to listen to Jerry Painter, who's the president of the Masonry Association of Florida, which represents the contractors, and then we'll do our presentation. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Al told me, asked me, would I come over and say just a little something, and he knows better than that. I've got 60 years, 60-plus years of time with the trial in my hand. They have photographs of me at five years old handing brick to my dad and to my granddad, working on a church. All I know is masonry. If you go to Skills USA, you go to the competition in the state of Florida Masonry, and you can win money because there's always a bet somewhere. And I will tell you, there's a bet, so somebody will come up and want to know, "Mr. Painter, what have you got in your pocket?" I have a brick. I'm a bricklayer. Okay? One of the best in the world, we buried two years ago. Bricklayer. That's all I know. Now, when kids come up to me and try to explain to me what I'm teaching in school or I'm talking to them, because I teach apprentice class twice. I'm supposed to be retired, okay? But that's about like when we used to have those automobile tire dealerships that could recap. You wear them out, and you go down there and you give them back, and you get a pair of recaps, and then you just pray how long it's going to be before it slings that recap, right? Been there, done that, folks. I can relate to the kids, and Al can tell you, I can relate to the kids. I've chopped cotton, I've cut pigs, I've birthed cows, I've rode tractors, I've built manholes 25-foot deep at the University of Florida. The old commercial on TV says, "We know a lot because we've done a lot." I've had places I have been, taught seminars all over the country. I am nothing but a bricklayer. But I'm going to change that and tell you, I'm nothing but a true trade crafts person. Because I had a kid, Skills USA, a few years ago up in Louisville, asked me, because I was their speaker, asked me, "Mr. Painter, how did you get to where you are if you're just a bricklayer?" I had to think about that. I said, "Son, let me think about that." I hadn't had that question asked. So, the next day, they're getting ready for competition, and I went back over, and I said, "I got to answer to your question if you can remember what your question was." She got to preface, "Kid, some days' attention span." So, he could remember, and he asked me. I said, "Well, first order of business, I want to make sure you understand, I wasn't just a bricklayer. I was a blankety-blankety-blankety-blankety-blankety, good damn bricklayer. But I just couldn't mind my own business." And we're in business 52 years. But I've worked my way in all of that. If you look, pull the code books, and you pull the standards for all the masonry stuff, you'll find my name in there. I helped write it all. I got tired of having to do what somebody else said and not explaining why. Okay? I've got tired of being three years behind the building code. And so, my goal in life was to be better and to be the best. But I want you to understand, we thank you as an industry, okay, for having enough foresight to go in and start programs that will help. Al wasn't lying when he's telling how much work out there, and it's every craft, and it's every trade across the country. I have been there, okay? That shortage, a lot of times, we didn't have that. We used to go and recruit, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, we'd recruit from the baseball team, the basketball team, the football team, okay? I'll recruit anywhere I can right now. I'll take young women, I'll take old women, I'll take young men, old men. I don't care. If you can do the job, you can do the job. People say, "Women?" I said, "Yes. Women have a better touch and a better eye than men do." Now, I'm not going to say that's genetic or whatever, but they do. And some of the best bricklayers I know have been women, okay? And we've worked them before. And the Palmer family here is a family of that. And I'm thinking, if all our stuff after 52 years was not stored in the warehouse somewhere, I probably could go through those five four drawer file cabinets and go down to the peas and find James Palmer in there many years ago. We crossed paths. But I want you to understand real briefly about what your job is. I don't know what your job is. I don't know what anybody's job is in here. But I really hope that most of you, within your heart, have a spirit and a soul that wants to provide and facilitate for this generation of kids we've got right now. And I'm going to challenge you, if that's not part of your job description, and I understand it's not in writing, but if it's not part of your job description, I need you to figure out why. Because if we don't do it, who's going to do it? Okay? We have generations after generation. I'm in that when they call, whatever it was after the war, boomers.
Baby boomers.
Well, we're about gone, okay? But this brick, real quick, and I'll get over there and talk to the kids about it, because I've used this all over the place and internationally about, just ask me what I got in my pocket, and I'll talk to you about the brick. The brick is natural resources. It's clay, shale, dirt, water. All this stuff has come up out of the ground. It's natural. It's found everywhere, okay? Now, we've had brick manufacturing plants in the state of Florida. We don't have the quality of clay in Florida. Our clay in Florida will move everybody else's clay, but it don't make good brick. But that's all right. We know where to get it. So, we mix all that stuff up as we bring the kids in through the school system. We take what we got. We take the different parts of the kid and their family and all that. We put it together. We mix it, mix it, mix it, and blend it, and blend it, and blend it, and to get it into a somewhat creamy mixture. But it's basically, and it's not homogenized, but it basically all is mixed together. And then that brick is run through a tube and extruded under pressure to form that shape. Okay? Once it's shaped, it may have some paint added to it. It may have some sand added to it. That's our job with the kids. We're teaching them. We're shoving them through that extruder to shape them. We're adding a little sand texture. We're adding a little paint texture. And then when it comes out, what happens to it? It goes into the kiln, and it gets heated and burnt up to 2,200 degrees. And then that brick becomes eternal. And it's only the fire that gives it the durability. But on the other hand, if it gets no fire, it don't burn. It crumbles. But then you can burn it. You can overburn it. And sometimes in school, and in our parents, and our expectations and everything, we do that. We will, as I say, overcook. We play a hand in the result. I'm just asking you folks to be a part of building the brick, okay? Now, there's all kinds of things, and you can go right across the street over here, I guarantee you, and tell you in that first building, and find some of those old, old brick that have crumbled and cracked and gone away. Because that's, we've learned how to make them over time. But it's the heat that creates the durability in this. And we can take our kids, and they can be the brick. They can be on the front of somebody's house. They can be in a hospital. They can be anywhere in the world they want to be. That their talent has brought them. But it starts right here at home, okay? Because when I get them, to talk to them and teach them, I can't push wet noodles. Nope, they don't go anywhere. But I'm just telling you, from the industry, thank you for your vision and foresight to give the kids a chance to find that thing that puts the sparkle in their eye. It may be hammer and nails. It may be a screwdriver and wire cutters. Or it may be a trial and brick. And I want to thank the Palmer family for participating in that and donating a full set of tools for all these kids to start with. Thank you.
At this point, I pass the collection plate. Jerry and I have gone all over the country, and I just step aside. You've got two Hall of Fame Masons presenting to you today. Jerry was recognized for his masonry and for his industry leadership, and I was recognized for the Hall of Fame for getting teachers, you can't take somebody out of the field, and they can't be a teacher. They teach the hands-on skills, but they also have to teach the related training. We always say, in apprenticeship, you learn, 90% of what you learn is on the job, but 10% has got to be some classroom training to where you understand what you're doing on the job and can become a foreman and a superintendent. And our salaries are very, very good. So, with this, I'd like to call up the Deborah Hall. Okay. And Jared, and Renee stand here. We have challenge coins from our foundation, and we don't give these out. Just, you have to kind of do something special. They put a request that instead of flowers at Mr. Palmer's funeral, that they donate tools to the CTE program. And to this date, those are the tools that we've gotten. We've got 20, 21 bags?
20 masonry bags that were donated by the family from individuals in lieu of flowers. And it's an $80 bag, and it comes with the tools in it necessary for masonry.
So, I mean...
This bag of masonry tools donated in memory of James Palmer, Palmer Masonry, on these 20.
That's over $250 worth of tools in that bag.
And here's our medallion, and on the front is our logo. And on the back, it's Block Strong. That's what we talk about. And Renee earns one too.
Well, thank you.
And so, we would like to get a picture taken because we have just been told that the, our Masonry Contractors Association of America that does our national magazine wants a photo and a story. So, while y'all go on with your meeting, I've got to go write a story tonight.
Renee, do you want the...
Sir.
Myself and the board chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Please.
Well, thank you guys for what you do for the kids. It means a heck of a lot. It really does. I wish we had the latitude to do more career technical stuff, but we're kind of bound by the state regulations.
I don't know if both of us need to be on the same end.
Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you.
God bless you. Thank you. Our kids are going to live, live better lives.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for all you do. My brother was in the masonry class years ago. Power play mechanic, Seminole.
Thank you again.
But no, that's not it. But it's that message. All right. Thank you.
I promised Jerry a dinner. And I'm going to take these two young ladies with us.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what it's about. At this time, we're ready for public comments, and we do have one that has requested to come before the board and the comments on the subject of appeal process, accountability, advocating, and protecting our son. And this will be Mr. Jason Reed and Mrs. Crystal Dryer. Did I say that correctly? All right. Thank you. You'll come, state your name, and give us your address. And you'll have three minutes. We appreciate you.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank y'all for y'all's time. I'm Crystal Dryer. Our address is 201 South Street, Willaca, Florida 32193.
I'm Jason Reed. Address is the same.
Originally, whenever we prepared our thoughts to talk to you guys this afternoon, it was an appeal plea. I was informed this morning that that's no longer the case, and that's okay. I still wanted to come forward and still wanted to kind of bring this issue up to you guys' concerns, only because I believe with students and education and in the public system that we should still have transparency. We've been on a journey since the beginning of March with some, I don't know what word we would use. We've been on a journey since the beginning of March with some disagreements. What's going on in school? There's no reason hash is out. The proper people are aware of them. It came to a conclusion that we are not necessarily in favor of, and that's okay. We're moving on. It's no longer an issue, or it's no longer something that we have power over. In the end of that process, it did end up resulting in a trespassing warning against Mr. Jason Braxton's stepdad. So, the plea, or the plan today was to come in and plead to see if there was a way to appeal that process. My understanding is that, no, the superintendent has the sole decision on that, which is, I understand that. But I'm hoping that maybe if we can kind of express a little bit of this concern to you guys, that maybe, I don't know if there's any say in the matter of just the public knowing and how the matter is being addressed. With that process, it stops him from being entitled. Let me catch my breath. People who do this, y'all are good. That trespassing comes in, and it's in for a two-year effect. It does not uphold, or it's not lift until April 2025. That's at the end of Braxton's seventh grade year. He's currently in fifth grade. We're very involved. That's how this whole process went in the first place and how we got as far as we did, because we advocate for our son and we protect our son. And we ultimately just wanted accountability of adults that were in his life that made some very questionable decisions. And we thought going to the higher adult, that the accountability would be served, and it didn't, and so on. With it being two years, Jason is now going to miss Braxton's fifth grade award ceremony. He's going to miss his sixth grade graduation. He's going to miss his QI orientation. He's not going to see the campus that his son is going to attend. He's not going to be able to go to his seventh grade soccer matches, his swim practices, his swim meets. So, really, the transparency is, is yes, I understand at the end of the day, the superintendent has to say so in the matter. I don't know if you, the board that I'm addressing, if you have any leniency in his persuasion, or if you want to ask what's going on any further, that we may be able to overturn this, because I don't necessarily know that it results in him needing to not see his son's next two years of education or be present in his achievements.
It's minute.
Thank you for your time.
All right, and thank you all so much for advocating for your son. Okay, we do not have any public hearing. We are now ready for the consent agenda, and we're going to start with you, Mr. Leary.
Madam Chairman, if I could just make a brief comment. I won't have anything to pull, but I just, I did have some concern about E7. But I've talked with our council and the superintendent, and we'll address that as we go in the budget process. And then, at the end, I'll make my comments on some legislative issues. Thank you.
All righty. Mrs. Wagner?
I have nothing to pull. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Buckles?
I want to commend some of the things that have happened that the superintendent and staff have tried to get through in the past week, but that'll come under my board comments. I just wanted to mention the consent for guardian training payment. I'm really pleased where we are with this, and I just, before we go into this, just wanted to say, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. That's it.
So, now you're not pulling the one on the guardian?
I'm not pulling it, no. I like it.
Mrs. Pickens?
I'm good. I have my questions answered.
And Mrs. France took care of me today, and so I appreciate that. All right?
And Madam Chair, just to point out, we did it...
I'm going to go ahead and next with that.
Yeah, if you want to mention it, I just want to make sure the board members, if they did have any questions, we do have Mr. Gang available on the line.
All right, and the reason we have the setup is because Mr. Bob Gang is on the line, and he's here to answer any questions that you may have or to hear any comments that you may have regarding the 2023 general bonds obligation resolution.
I had a closed-door meeting with the superintendent prior to this meeting, and I thought it went very well. What we're trying to do is to try to set the stage for the future of the young people of Putnam County. So, with that, I don't have any questions for Bob. I feel comfortable. Other board members may.
All righty. Anyone?
Thanks for being here, though, Bob.
My pleasure. Hello, everyone.
How you doing? Thank you again, as Mr. Leary said.
Thank you, Bob.
I guess with the masonry people and his follow-up, sort of ties in the builders and the one overseeing the bond for us.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Madam Chairman, if there's not any more comment, I will move approval of the consent agenda.
And I'll second it.
All right, it was moved by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept the consent agenda for this meeting, and seconded by Mr. David Buckles. All right, we open. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Are we ready to vote? All right, all in favor? Let it be known by aye. Opposes? Motion carries. We are now in emergency session. We have two items before us. Okay, the first item in reference to, I want to make sure I do it correctly. Okay, the personnel matter. Item one is the personnel matter, which you have before you.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for L1 personnel matter, and it was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Open for question, comment? All right. We ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposes? Motion carries by zero. Our second?
Is this, this is discussion?
Oh, no. Second one is unfinished business, yes. Okay. All righty, so we are now out of emergency session, and we're back into our regular session. Okay, we have item M, our discussion of unfinished business. This is in regards to a concern, a concern by board member, Mrs. Linda Wagner, on deletion of fixed assets.
And I do believe the questions that I had at the last hearing have been resolved, so I do not have any more questions about this list. So I do not have any more questions about this list.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent had Mr. Sermon prepared to come and make...
He is here if you have any questions.
If he has any additional information since the last hearing, I'd still like to hear that.
Of course, if you have any additional information you want to offer, if you want to come up to the mic.
Hey, good afternoons to the Board.
Good afternoon, sir.
I did call Ms. Wagner, and we spoke about our processes for our fixed assets. All these units in question were returned to our IT department. They're the one that's gonna be the deciding factor whether we're gonna keep them in inventory or dispose. And these, these items were, unfortunately, they were just taken out of service. It was just too much money to fix those. So that was the only question that I got an email about. I don't know if you had any, anything additional you want to know about there?
No, and as we discussed, I was looking at specific computers, because just for the Board's understanding, some of these computers, they were laptops that were between $1,000 and $1,900 apiece. I work specifically with Apple products myself, and I was questioning how a three- or four-year-old laptop of that price range could be just basically junked, you know, after three or four years, as opposed to being fixed or maybe revamped somewhat. I was advised that some, you know, one accidentally got left on top of a vehicle. There was some valid reasons for that, and sometimes it was the cost effectiveness of whether it could be fixed or not. So we had a good conversation, and I'm certainly satisfied.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you harvest parts?
I do believe some of the units are cannibalized. They are, you know, if something can be used to make one work, I'm sure that's done.
We've had local, in past years, we've had local people purchase the deleted assets to cannibalize and take out parts to do that. But it is not uncommon every year or a couple of years to have a pretty large batch of items like this to be, to be deleted. So, but I understand your question, very valid.
Well, like, I still have, I'm still using my 2013 MacBook Air.
But you're the one taking care of it every day, too.
Yes.
So is there a committee that will look at these items and decide? Your team, you have a team that looks at them?
No, ma'am, we, us, not personally, we just keep track of them. They're returned to our IT department.
Okay, okay. And so I guess, I know, I trust, I know they look at it and make decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sermon. Okay, alright.
Yeah, yeah, I thought I was interrupting Mr. Leary. Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept the deletion of fixed assets.
I'll second that, Madam Chairman.
Motion by Mrs. Linda Wagner that we accept the deletion of our fixed assets, and seconded by Mr. Phil Leary. There are no further questions. Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Our motion carries. We have no new...
I do have a question, just as a point of order, maybe. Didn't, we tabled that at the last meeting? So is this, this was the place to bring it up in discussion?
Do we need to make a motion to bring it off, to take it off the table?
I think we have to do something to take it off the table.
Actually, now that you mentioned it, that's not appropriate to me as well, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up earlier.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we take the deletion of assets off of the table.
I'll second that.
Alright, Mrs. Holly Pickens has motioned that we take the deletion of fixed assets off the table, and seconded by Mr. David Buckles. We're ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries unanimously. We have no new business. We're now ready for our board reports. So we're gonna start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
Okay, I just have a couple of things that I've attended where I felt really good about the things that we're doing in the school district. The first event was the Crescent City Junior-Senior High School Music Concert. Ms. Gilead came also. It was an excellent, very well-attended, relatively respectful audience in the gymnasium. It's, you know, it is, you're used to being loud in the gym, so... But they did an excellent job, and the chorus sang my favorite song, "Sound of Silence", so, and did a great job. And then I went to the Cambridge Awards Night in Crescent City. They invited the incoming seventh graders, and then all the way to the senior awards. And it was really the first time that they had done where they had the sixth graders come over, and that part was not well-attended, but as the grade levels increased, the attendance increased. And I really liked, they did the CC, and they had Cambridge on it, like a letter, you know, like you get in sports, and this was for their academics. I think that is a great thing. They also got the crest, and then each exam, the ACE exam, they'll get an arrow. And I just think that just brings attention to the Cambridge program, and they're doing great things in Crescent City. I went to the district forum at CLO, and although it was not well-attended, I do think it was still very informative. I'm glad that we kind of discussed having it live next time, where people can see the meeting. I also had an idea that I kind of brainstormed a little bit with Ashley McCool, and so hopefully, that idea, she'll give it life. Then I went to the Take Stock in Children Senior Awards last Thursday, and eight of our seniors that are in the program, which is an amazing mentoring program, and I suggest that board members jump on board with that program. It is just amazing. But eight seniors graduated, or will graduate, and they were given a two-year college scholarship for going to their mentoring sessions and making good grades, and, you know, staying out of trouble. And it's just a great program. So Wendy Hansford is the person that you need to contact. She is just wonderful. Also, in our consent agenda, we, there was a place in there for a robot to line the fields. Well, of course, I called Ms. France, because I wasn't really, I didn't know about that. And our children are gonna be used to program and to code this, this robot, who then will be shared by all our schools, and it'll be programmed to line fields. I think that's a, I mean, I kind of want to go watch it happen. So I'd like to be invited to the first line lining. And I would like to congratulate the flag football team and Coach Keenan Henry on being named county champs. And, you know, a huge shout-out to the Palmer family. What a great way to honor your loved one, to do something like that. That, that's amazing. So thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Mr. Buckles?
Same as she mentioned of the Palmer family. That, you know, we've got so many career opportunities for our young people that people really don't even know that we have. And we would, you know, we'd do more if the state would have funded in a more appropriate fashion, but we do the best we can with what we've got, and we try to take it to the highest levels that we can. Having said that, I was very pleased to see the Guardian mentioned, you know, looks like we're still high up in that program, and we're being recognized and actually emulated for what the superintendent and the board have done in the programs throughout our schools. Are we perfect? No, but we're, we're daggers sure with the sheriff's office and local law enforcement, and Travis Weaver, and people that are helping keep us, keep us vigilant. I feel better every day about our kids. And, you know, you can't, you can't do it all, but you can sure give it your best. It's the end of the year coming. We're gonna need everybody to be cognizant of graduations and ceremonies, and people on the road, and kids turning 16 and driving. It's, you know, they're all out there, and they're on the highways. And I just real, real pleased that we've had some of the things that look bad that you maybe see in local news media or on television that have occurred lately are actually the result of very detailed undercover work to root out problems that are in our communities. And actions we took today on, now a previous employee, and actions that have involved kids with medications and substances that they should not have access to. Fortunately, we're quite prepared. I have been very impressed with Mr. Hedstrom and conversations I've had with him concerning those who can, who are trained in how to utilize the Narcan and things in case we have children who don't understand what they have when they bring it in their backpack to school, or even if they do. But, you know, I go back years ago to the horror stories of young people bringing hardcore, whether it's a bag of cocaine or what, to school. And you have, turn it over to law enforcement, they handle it, and then you have the parent come out there and want their drugs back. So we have societal problems, but for the most part, I think we're very prepared, and you always anticipate those things that can happen. So I think our staff is really on top of this, and I just, I don't know, I may be talking in circles here, but I'm trying to tell you that we're in good hands, and we can't ever let up. We've just got to keep pushing ahead. So, Mr. Superintendent, let your staff know how much we appreciate what they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Wagner?
I just wanted to echo one thing about the Guardian program. That is something up until approximately a year ago, I was unaware of. And when I found out that it existed and what it consisted of and the training that's involved, I was just so excited that Putnam County has really seemed to have led the way on that Guardian program. And it's my understanding, I think Mr. Leary may know more about the legislative end of it, but it's my understanding they're considering expanding that now statewide, and I certainly hope in a very safe way that they can do that, because I think, especially with society the way it is right now, it's just more and more important to protect our children. I laughed, I laughed when Ms. Pickens mentioned the robot, because I found that very interesting myself. And I attended the Finance 2.0 training session last week in Gainesville. They finally had a training within driving distance, which was kind of nice. And in the midst of that, I actually used the robot as an example of certain expenditures and what we were discussing, you know, funding and the different, the different branches of funding, and where something like that would fit in. So I was using that as an example that we were able to then discuss as a group, and so it helped me learn a little something there as well. But I think that's a very creative idea to both help teach our children and utilize it for the district in a productive way. And otherwise, I enjoyed that, the training on the finances. I actually started really delving into some of the budgetary items, and am trying to just continue my education on those ends of things. So hopefully, I can help assist in making better financial decisions as a board member here, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Wagner. Mr. Leary?
Well, Madam Chairman, we're moving along so well today. I promise you, I won't take more than 30 minutes. Actually, I guess, you know, I texted Melissa last night about nine o'clock and said, "I must have missed to see the robot, the turf thing, when I first went through the agenda, and I was so fascinated by it and then reading more into it." I said, "Please call me tomorrow, give me some better explanation of it." But I can assure you, and Mr. Buckles can confirm this, if it comes anywhere close to the way Coach Bennett used to line the fields, at which takes hours, I mean, hours. You know, and you're talking about football and baseball and soccer. And so what a great thing, and the opportunity for our kids to be able to program, and I think it'll, it'll be a real asset. I was recovering from my second bout with COVID and missed the musical, which I was very disappointed about, because, believe it or not, I played the trombone in junior high, and I am a big, you know, musical fan, and we have such an incredible program in all our high schools, you know, with musical theater, and so I hope to make it next year. And then lastly, as I'm sure you have been reading, and if you haven't, I can understand that, because it is very depressing. But we are facing, as a school district and in all school districts, an unprecedented move by the legislature to do some things that they're gonna, that they've already done. You know, they passed universal vouchers, the governor signed it, it's in place, that can impact our district millions of dollars. I mean, if you just look at the roughly 900 homeschool students we have, if you multiply that by the FTE, you're looking at about $7 million. Now, again, obviously, I don't think everybody's gonna take advantage of it, but it is, and they did not hold harmless the districts for that additional money. And it doesn't look like they're going to. We've got about a little less than three weeks left in the legislative session. So that and the FRS rollback to the 2011 position, I was talking with Rhonda at the forum, could again have a multimillion-dollar impact on the district. And then in the House, which is, was so very surprisingly to me, since the Speaker and the Speaker Pro Tem and our top lieutenant representative Payne, the House budget is looking at eliminating the sparsity supplement that we get, you know, we share the small school districts. It's $65 million. The funding comprehension, whole harmless, $733 million. Instruction material allocation, they're proposing eliminating that. So there are 11 categoricals that the House is proposing eliminating. The Senate all has it in their budget. But, you know, when they go to conference, and usually it's, you know, the last week of the session before everything comes together, and, you know, the term "making sausage" is an understatement. I mean, it's more like gutting a pig. But it's, it is, you know, we really, from a budget standpoint, could be facing some very serious consequences. And the only thing, the only way that we can compensate for that is millage. I mean, and, you know, so I'm gonna be up there next week for the small counties, school days?
Rule days.
Rule days, yeah, are you gonna be there?
Yeah.
Okay. But in talking to both Chris Doolin, you know, our small school district representative and lobbyist, and then our lobbyist, Patrick Bell, it looks like, you know, there's not a lot of things that we can do to stop it. It's just, you know, hold on, and hopefully that the Senate, you know, position will prevail in a lot of this. But, you know, it's to the point where when I get an email from Chris, I'm, you know, spending two hours, and then I talked to him for about two hours the other morning, just trying to understand, you know, what is it we can do? But I do think it's important that each of us reach out, again, to our legislative delegation, Senator Hudson and Representative Payne, and just say, you know, this will hurt small school districts at a time that we're already, you know, dealing with financial issues.
Well, Phil, let me ask you a question, while you're on that subject. Would it be most appropriate for us to direct the superintendent to put a letter together? to put a letter together, to have the board chairman sign and, and, or us to sign to send just on sparsity? And the reason I say that is because sparsity funding, it, it used to always be the first thing they'd throw up there. Back when, years ago, when George Kirkpatrick was alive and he, he was in Tallahassee, the first thing he'd throw at us was, if you don't, if you're not happy with this, we'll drop sparsity. And, and sparsity funding is in place, and you know this and Rick knows it, because rural districts don't have the tax base that the more populated districts have. And that's what's been the backbone of, you know, keeping like, that's why you keep the Northeast Florida Consortium together and other panhandle areas because you've got strength in numbers. And rural Florida is so different than the stuff that they've got in, in the more populated session. But I mean, I, I guess what you're talking about is maybe a letter just urging to keep sparsity and, or, or whatever idea you come up with, Rick.
I actually have a NEFAC Board of Directors meeting Thursday.
Right.
And I'm sure that will be, we'll meet with our lobbyists and...
Well, NEFAC might be the route to go with that, Rick.
I'm just suggesting we might do that through the NEFAC because they represent fifteen small districts, so.
Well, and with other appropriations out there, we don't wanna, at the same time, you don't wanna make somebody really angry, you know?
No, and, and, and Mr. Doolin was, you know, although he did need to remind me because I'm well aware of it, he says, you know, these, these legislators can be pretty vengeful. And, you know, if you get in the way of their train.
First thing they're gonna pull every time will be sparsity.
But, you know, between the, the Senator Mumford, past Senator Mumford, who's the, the lobbyist for the superintendents, who really, you know, I don't want to minimize the Florida School Boards Associations, but in a lot of ways, they're really not looked at that favorably. I mean, it's, you know, as by the Republican Caucus, you know, kind of a step up from maybe the, the teachers' union and listen, I'm not bashing the teachers' union, I'm just, you know, telling you the way it is. But the superintendents do have a lot of political clout. So, I'm hoping them and the NEFAC lobbyists, you know, can, can, you know, and that we can, you know, count on some of our friends in the Senate, you know, Senator Perry, who was represented us for years.
I did, I did meet with, just on that topic, we had a regional fads meeting, our association, and we met with our lobbyists yesterday. So, we are, you know, we are discussing that and talking about some ways to communicate.
Yeah, the superintendent would be able to work the entire backbone of the panhandle area, the Heartland Consortium, along with, to unify all rural districts, so.
I guess it just, you know, surprises me that the leadership in the House, you know, all representing small school districts that, you know, that, that we even got to this point. But we're here and, you know, it looks like it's gonna go to, you know, conference, which is when, you know, they, they negotiate and try to come up with some type of compromise. But, you know, it'll be interesting to see when we're up there next week exactly how things go. So, I'll leave it at that and I'd again encourage you to, to review these, you know, if you don't read any of Chris's reports but his legislative, you know, budget analysis, I think that's important. And then the last thing I wanna, I'm gonna compliment the superintendent and his staff. We must be doing an outstanding job because the forum, the community forum we had, there weren't not many parents there and, you know, I've been on the boards, what, when do we been since, end of November? And I hardly ever receive a complaint, which is a good thing because when I was on the city commission, I got them daily. But, so, congratulations, Mr. Superintendent and your staff. I, I, you know, and, and really, it was an excellent presentation and, you know, the, the staff is, is really reaching out and doing some, some great things, so.
Thank you, Mr. Leary.
That wasn't quite thirty minutes, Madam Chairman.
Phil, Phil, Sandra, if you don't, Sandra, Sandra.
Talking about what the district needs financially.
Sandra, if you don't mind, one thing to piggyback off what Rick's, I mean, Phil just said, if, he, he doesn't get a lot of complaints, but when you do get a complaint, ensure that they, they follow up with you if, if the parent with a problem, like we saw some parents earlier in the meeting. I've received contact from people and if they don't call me back and tell me what the problem is, I can't work with the district to resolve it at the lowest possible level. And once it gets to a point that it can't be, can't be sustained, it, then somebody has to make a decision.
Right.
And then you get harsh punishments and as you see, people come before the board because something happened. It probably didn't have to happen. But as a board member, if you get a call like that, contact the superintendent, he'll direct staff to get with you with parental problems. Better you don't show up at the school as a board member and try to work on a situation. But superintendent does have some good staff that'll, that can work these things out, ninety-nine percent of them.
And a good rule of thumb is to make sure that they have spoken with the principal and administrator at that school because that, that is where it should start.
That's correct.
And if it's involving another employee that's under that administrator, chances are, they could work it out there before we put our hands in.
It's better to let the superintendent and their folks do that.
Because I can remember being in situations where...
If I can't fix it, just call Susan.
Yeah. She gets, she gets a lot of...
Susan can, Susan can find me and, and we can direct you to staff and that type of things.
I just, I generally, that department. Okay, real quick, just always, the retirees, thanking them for their service and I still eventually wanna put that on, on the superintendent's agenda, that we could somehow have these people to come in. You know, I just see, look them in the face and thank them for their services because Barbara Daley, four years, but that's four years. Pamela Case, sixteen years, seven months. Patricia Wilson, twenty-two years, seven months. Sandra Key, twenty-three years, ten months. Samuel Hutchinson, twenty-eight years, nine months. Barbara Bates, thirty-five years, nine months. John M. Chastain, thirty-six years, two months. A total of a hundred sixty-five years and eight months given to our children here in this district. And so, I, I'd say a truly wonderful employee is hard to find. We greatly appreciate having you on our team and that's our word to them, thanking them for their services because without them doing what they do, a lot of things would fall down around us or whatever the case might be. I too had the opportunity along with Mr. Leary and Mrs. Pickens to attend the superintendent's community forum. The thing that I got out of it is that the leaders, the superintendent's leadership team, they know their stuff and they were able to answer the questions. And I thought it was so great, well, it's professional. Every question that was asked, they had already researched the, the answer, to give the people the information. That's what we want and, and that's what I would want if I asked a person a question, to know that they took it to heart and so there to be commended, superintendent and you as well. I did not walk out because you were getting ready to scream. I had another, I had another engagement.
I understand.
That was at seven and I had to hurry and I didn't get a ticket. It's that time of year, as Mr. Buckles mentioned, and grad bash and graduation and we want our students to have a great time, but we also want them to be safe, to don't, not take dares and do stupid things that could come back to bite them. Crescent City is getting ready, gearing up to have an alumni basketball game and, and I saw Coach in Hitchcock the other day and I asked him, was he gonna play? He said, "No way." Said, "He was just..."
Two bits.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, but that's a great thing, to build community, you know, when you come together like that, former students come to play, those students that are actually there in school is just great. And the Guardian program, Mrs. Wagner, it's, it's, it's really second to none. The sheriff's office does have a video of the inception of the program. I happened to be new on the board at the time and let me tell you, it was hot, the getting that to pass, you know, because of the things people envisioned, but thank God it prevailed and I believe we are as well off as we are, we're safety because of some of those initiatives, having those guardians in place. And it's no secret because there is a sign that tells you that we got folk in there that are packing. And so, you, you, you better guard yourself. So, all is well and I just thank God for being a part of a group like this and a district like this. All right. Mrs. Attorney.
Oh, sorry. Mrs. Simpson. Attorney Simpson.
Oh, I, I'm probably the only thing that reported this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I've got all kinds of stuff to share. When I'm sitting here, I'm getting all kinds of messages from my, my people out there. But I do wanna say on a comical note, I used to coach football back in the seventies and eighties. And I remember one time lining the football field off and I had some students holding a string, you know, you'd hold strings. And, you know, run, back then, we use some kind of archaic looking painter, but one of the students was five year, five yards off on one of them. So, I did lines like this. So, you know, you're just following the string, you know, but, so I had to go in and I had to paint that line green and then redo it again, but having, had a robot do it is, I don't know what we would've done.
We used to just put the chalk down.
That's right. Marble dust.
Yeah, marble dust.
You get that in your eyes now, doesn't it? Speaking of the Guardian, Guardian program and, and, you know, we're one of the first districts in the entire state to get it started. Now, we didn't get it approved right off the bat, but, you know, that's another story, right?
Yeah.
But I was told by our esteemed Director of Security that we're actually DOE and Office of School Safety is actually reaching out to us for, can I share this? For an outline and examples of our Guardian program to share at the state level. So, we were actually one of the leaders in the state. And actually, the sheriff and I, a year or two ago, actually went to New Orleans and shared to a national audience about what we've done, so.
This is gonna go nationwide before it's over.
Yeah. It, it is, and, and like I say, people asked me after one of the recent shootings, what are we doing different? And I said, "We're not doing anything different." Because our kids are safe now. I mean, we never rest our world, but I'm saying, we've got a system in place where you come on campus, hurt our kids, then we got people that's gonna hurt you, you know, that kind of thing. So, y'all be proud of that. Let me just read a couple of things here. Speaking of, I think David talked, one of y'all talked about, you know, the, this time of the year and kids being safe. Yesterday and today, we had an assembly, let's see, yesterday at Placa Junior Senior High, today at Interlock and Junior Senior High, and actually back in January at Crescent City Junior Senior High, Kenneth Foster set up an assembly where students were informed about the importance of hanging up and driving, hanging the phone up. Okay, we all could learn from that.
Absolutely.
Because so many accidents take place by, you know, people looking at that phone, okay? So, we are really trying to stress that safety aspect of it. Here's some other real positive stuff. Today, we were at the All A Luncheon and these were seventh and eighth graders who earned all As this year and we had a few of them who have earned all As last year and this year. And they received a hundred dollar check from the Isaiah City Quanter. So, I had the opportunity to speak to them, challenge them a little bit, but it's a great, great day. Parents turned out and very happy about that. And you can actually see the video of that tomorrow, it'll be on our website, I believe, where you can see the recording of that event. This week, as you know, we're transporting second graders to the Bartram Frolic on the riverfront. And I was told a few minutes ago, we've had over a thousand of our second graders.
By the end of the week.
By the end of the week. Thank you. Who are having an opportunity to learn about the history of Putnam County, you know, through Bartram. And also, we have some Placa Junior Senior High students that are there acting as guides. So, what, what an effort, you know, and those kids will learn a lot about our history. On our website, they're located some parent surveys. I encourage our parents to go on there and take the surveys. I know Title One. Ashley, what else?
Yes, she's surveying for DOE.
Okay. So, some surveys that we need to gather data.
Broadband survey, too.
Right. Broadband?
The broadband survey that we're doing for the Chamber of Commerce is a county effort.
Sure.
To test broadband throughout the counties.
That's gonna be very important because of, for funding from both federal and state.
Absolutely. And are, are all those surveys kind of in the same area?
They are.
Okay.
They're in the gallery on the top.
Okay, thank you. Also, we've started a new communication system, if you will. We're starting a podcast and that's kind of the, the latest thing. And we've actually interviewed a number of our school administrators and we're scheduling some interviews. I'm, I'm interviewing, kinda like, you know, Larry King Live kind of thing, but I'm, I'm asking them questions and just getting them to talk about some of the things going on in our schools. So, we've interviewed a number, all three of our new principals and some of our other principals about some of the culture questions going on in our school. We're also gonna be interviewing teachers and students and that type of thing. So, it'll be an ongoing thing. Every Wednesday, we're gonna be putting this, can they access it on the website? Okay. And it's called...
You're gonna be able to access it for all of your other podcast channels, so Spotify and/or Apple Music, so we'll create a podcast channel.
Right.
If you subscribe to them, you'll subscribe to this and get updates and it will come out each week on Wednesday.
And we're calling this the Pulse.
The Pulse of Putnam County School District.
The Pulse of Putnam County School District. So, really cool thing. A couple of other things real quick. Tomorrow night, in this very room, six PM, we're having our first Bond Oversight Committee meeting. Okay, very exciting and it is a public meeting. I don't believe, I know public comments will be allowed, but they can be viewed by the public. I know our staff's gonna present some information and then turn them loose, okay? So, all of you have had a hand in that. And again, I look forward to that, just the transparency and the trust. We want this to be a success and this is part of that success. Just a reminder about Titanic, Musical Theater presenting the Titanic. This is the second time I remember that Mr. Big Noddy presented the Titanic. I don't remember the first time he did it when we had it at the college. They literally had hydraulics to lift the Titanic, okay? Now, I don't think we're doing that this year, are we, Ms. McDaniel? No hydraulics? Putting you on the spot. Her son is one of the leads, by the way, so that's why I'm putting her on the spot.
There are robotic supplies.
I suggest you come watch it to see.
Say again?
I suggest you come watch it to buy them.
Yeah, come by and watch it. Yeah, come watch.
...around South Flowers and like I said.
Right.
Surely they can raise the Titanic if they allowed his son to walk up the wall and Mayor Poppins, oh yeah.
Yeah.
I'm expecting nothing less.
The second thing, yours gonna, I'm sure it will be bigger than that.
Yeah, so come out and see us, yeah.
So, the dates are the first weekend in May and the second...
May four through the fourteenth. I believe the last show's always on Mother's Day.
Yes, that's the fourteenth.
So, make your husband take you out for Mother's Day or something. And finally, this is really cool. Recently, I was at a conference and I met the Worldwide CEO, actually myself and Melissa, were you there or?
You were there, Mikey.
Yeah, Mikey, Mikey Hales was there. We met the Worldwide CEO of the Lego Educational, you know Legos?
Yeah.
Well, there's just regular Lego, but there's Lego Education Worldwide. And I invited him to come to Putnam County and he lives in Denmark, okay? He's coming to Putnam County Thursday.
Oh, my goodness.
Gonna visit Crescent City Junior Senior High and Kelly Smith. Is that right? And we're also gonna meet him at, and we're also gonna meet him at the district office at Sea Low and gonna present to him. How cool is that? Somebody from across the ocean would come to this county because we, we are big players in Lego, okay? So, he was very impressed by the way we present that or teach that and don't know if I've missed anything, but that's a, that's a heck of an opportunity.
He will learn things that will turn around and help Lego teach thousands and hundreds of thousands of kids.
Right. Our, I'm telling you, our STEM initiative, and actually, we're going to Sawgrass the first week of May and they're having a worldwide, help me out, Melissa, what's that called?
Ecosystem.
Ecosystem convening. This, these are people come from all over the world and we've been invited to go and talk with some of them. So, I'm telling you, Putnam County's on the map, not only here in Florida, but nationwide and worldwide. So, thanks to you guys, a lot of good stuff going on.
Thanks to those that are in the trenches. That's, that's where it happens.
And I, I just, I can't brag enough on our staff and everybody at the schools, but I'm telling you, the people in this room, really, they're here for you and anytime you need something, just give them a call. Yeah, that's all I have.
Anything else to come up with the board? If not?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.